The Pledge of Allegiance. I would like to, before we approve the agenda, I would like to pull. Um, item number fourteen, please. Uh, basically, uh, there's some language, uh, big formatting on the, the document that, that's in there that needs to be updated and addressed. Um, I'd like to bring that back to, at the next meeting.
Um, I'd make a motion to postpone that, uh, proposal, fourteen, proposal for WASDA policy development procedure.
Second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, now I need an approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'd second it.
Then moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we have somebody signed up to speak. Get my thing out. Uh, addressing the board, you may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for hearing public comment. If this is the case, we ask that you, prior to the start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone, um, and state your name. Do not reflect adversely on political or economic views, ethnic background, character, or motives of any individual. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments, too. It is best to call the superintendent's office a couple of days before this meeting. Um, if this isn't possible, you can ask the board president to recognize you during the hearing section. And we'll go for, uh, three minutes per person for a total of twenty-one minutes. First up is Mandy Stevens.
Hi, today I am coming to you. Um, I, on March twenty-fourth, I actually went to a meeting, um, put on by FEMA called Crisis Management for School-Based Incidents. It was because I needed a certain type of clock hour and it ended up being quite eye-opening. Um, I also attended, it was ironic that I attended two days later to the board meeting and heard about the budget cuts. And, um, the comment was made, we have a perimeter now at every school, we have one entrance at every school. Um, and it was almost suggested that we no longer needed our, um, security officers. So I'm going to respond to that. Um, I've got different responses and within the minutes, I'll see which ones I actually get to. Um, one of the reasons we need these, um, men and possibly women in the future is that a perimeter might deter intruders, but it's sometimes, if someone breaches it, a security offer, officer can respond immediately, whether it's, um, contacting authorities, intervening directly, or initiating lockdown procedures. Our students and teachers see the security officer walking around, checking doors, helping in incidents all day, every day. It gives us the peace of mind that something bad probably won't happen because there is a person at our school constantly watching out for our best interest. We also have, um, more support during emergencies, in emergencies such as medical, weather-related, or even security threats. Um, he can be part of, they can be part of our, um, provide coordination through our security team. They can do crowd control, helping staff and students stay safe and calm. I've actually recently had that training through FEMA. When asked about schools having a perimeter, the former secret, uh, Secret Service officer teaching our course said, hey, that's great. But that is just a perimeter. A determined person can try and possibly seek to succeed to get past that. But he was more impressed that all of the schools present had the perimeter and the security officer. These people are not utilized for their, um, though these people may, these people are not utilized for the horrific acts that we never want to have, or they are utilized for the horrific acts we never wanted. However, they help in, um, even with courting staff and students and in any crisis. It is a visible deterrent. Um, just having a security presence can deter bad behavior from students, visitors, and potential intruders. It shows the school takes safely, safety seriously. We see our officer walking around our school, standing at parent pickup and drop-off. Um, he's always maintaining a watchful eye on all that goes on when our students are most vulnerable to outsiders. Others see him too, and it sends a message. Um, the security office can manage who enters and exits the building, especially during school hours, ensuring only authorized individuals get in, even if there is a secure perimeter. At Heights, we have a one-door system that opens both doors at once, which could allow a person to enter the building without being identified by the office. The security officer is often in his office, if not around, and can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. If you want to submit anything, uh, feel free. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you, Mandy.
Anyone else wish to speak? Blake, is there anybody online? Thank you. We'll conclude that portion of the meeting. Now moving on to student rep reports. Yoshimi?
Uh, not much to report for ASB stuff. We're doing budgets too for all of our clubs and, uh, band has lilac, um, the seventeenth of May and tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, uh, this Saturday, um, the middle school band is going to march, um, in the Apple Blossom Wenatchee Parade, and then, um, we're going to the carnival after that. And Miriam and I, uh, the senior majors are going to lead the middle school band, um, in that parade. And then, um, yeah, not much else for band stuff.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Yoshimi? Yoshimi, Kami?
I don't have anything to report today.
Thank you. Alexandra?
I don't believe I have anything to report.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to discussion items, school building reports. First up, I am Bailey.
Hello, thank you for having me. Um, coming down to the end of the school year, usually the busiest time of the year for us, uh, seems kind of counterintuitive, but it actually is. Um, I've made a list here. There's a lot of things going on. We are preparing for state testing, just started that today. Um, I believe more buildings than just ours is, is starting to prepare for that, um, SBA testing at the end of the year. Um, we are preparing students and staff for the end of the year graduation activities. I'm sure all of these guys are really excited. I'm surprised to hear they didn't have anything to report. Uh, but they will soon enough. We are going to have some meetings coming up to inform them of all of those and get them on board. Um, I have communicated out to, through Parent Square, intend to do so again in May and again in June, so watch for that Parent Square to come out again. Um, and we'll have updates to, to the calendar. Um, I want to give a shout out to Riley Maddox and the entire Ag Department. They've done a couple of activities that are very successful and a continuation of tradition, um, including Griz's Farm. We had a lot of little kids and the next generation of FFA students at the school going through the pens and, and petting the animals and, uh, and livestock. We also have the plant sale coming up in the first week of May, so be prepared for that. It's very popular. If you want any plants, please show up early. Um, otherwise you won't get any. Prom is next weekend. Hopefully kids are excited about that one. Um, we have a few groups to celebrate as well. Uh, we have Woosh is headed to state. And we have three groups, HOSA, DECA, and Ag Mechanics that are headed to nationals. And I just learned today that we have a student, because I eavesdropped and overheard this, but we have a student that was accepted into the Bridge to Teaching Program through WSU. Congratulations, Kami Duncan. Um, tomorrow we will be hosting a multi-agency event called Teen Target Zero to inform students, um, and, and teach them about the effects of alcohol and other substances on driving. Uh, we have successfully completed this for our upper level students already in years past, and so we're focusing this year on our sophomore students. Multi-agency, we have Benton County Fire, Police Department, EMS, and our Thrive Coalition that will come to present that, uh, during school. Um, and students will, will learn all about that. We also are trying to piggyback that for next year. Uh, Hayden Hicks and Benton County Fire Department came in and proposed, uh, response simulation, uh, that we'd like to do closer to prom for the older kids, uh, next year. So that's what we'll be talking about, uh, to try and, and work through. Um, if we can make it work this year, we would love to do that before graduation. If not, then we're going to push that to next year. Um, we just passed the deadline for the last of our local scholarships and we're excited to see which kids get those and see their faces as they get awarded scholarships and move on to the next step. So, um, any questions for me?
Questions, Brian?
I know you won't give me the number, but what, what are we projecting for class size this year, graduation? Still two-fifty-ish, hopefully?
Well, everything together, yeah, we're pushing, we're trying to improve upon our, our former numbers, so hopefully we're pushing ninety percent. Um, it's a little bit smaller than you might think. All kids total will probably have about two-hundred-and-sixty. That includes our online students, our in-person kids are only about two-thirteen. Um, so again, ninety percent hopefully of that two-fifty.
Thank you.
Ryan, do you have a scholarship night on the calendar?
It is on the calendar. Um, you'd have to go to the calendar. I didn't, I don't know off the top of my head. These guys might. Any ideas? I can send that to you. I can send that to you, or you can pull up the Parent Square that I sent out. It has the list of dates on, on the left. Tuesday, it's the same night every year of graduation, so it, I, I thought Tuesday night was open, so I think it's Monday night, actually. I think it's Monday night.
Any other questions for Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Uh, next up is migrant director Eric Lares. Okay, he's on a, he's at another meeting. Okay. Uh, moving on to discussion item number three, review of policy and procedure thirty-four thirteen, uh, student immunization and life-threatening health conditions.
So this is the policy we had on previously, and I was concerned in the procedure. There was nothing about life-threatening health conditions. Um, I had a conversation with the nurses. We did some research on other policies. The reality is that they have to kind of regulate the immunization piece. That's why the procedures are, immunization has all the procedures. Whereas the life-threatening conditions are what they are, and they, those comes from the doctor with the health plan from the doctor, so it's not necessary to be in the procedures. Um, we did talk about trying to define those, but then in the end, we thought it was better for it to be broad, broad, because you never know what might become a health-threatening condition for a certain child. So, um, we, we feel that it's appropriate as is.
Any questions for Deanna on this one?
Uh, so on the policy under exclusion from school, um, if, if a student is expelled for either not having the vaccination or not having the medication, is the district still responsible for providing?
Right, it's not expulsion. It's not a disciplinary. It's not disciplinary in any way. Um, it might feel that way. Uh, but no, of course, they, students have, even, even if there wasn't suspension, students have the right to their edu, to their education, so, um, no, they would get whatever they, they need, and we try to help facilitate if they need to get, um, maybe. We have sometimes, you know, folks might wait and think they can get something really close to school and they can't, so we help with that, trying to get, facilitate, you know, through urgent care in different places. We are having an immunization clinic. It was canceled and then it was put back on. Um, but so the farmer's clinic will be bringing a van, um, the like, that, like, the last week or second to last week of school, so people can take advantage of that as well.
Blake, we've been notified that the Zoom has frozen. Can you please check into that?
Um, so, yeah, so they just have to, you know, we try to help them. They do lots of reminders. They send information out to parents. Um, and then, like, even for, like, our homeless students, if a student had a challenge, or our migrant students, we help facilitate the meeting to the doctor, or whatever. We help families so that they can comply.
It started the working again.
I had one question, uh, on the procedure, and it's just, it's at the very last page, um, under a list of students not fully immunized. Um, says the district will keep or be able to produce within twenty-four hours a list of children who are not fully immunized. Um, is that by RCW or is, is, is that something?
We always have a list. It's not something we would ever, we publish or anything. We're actually required to report numbers to the Health Department. But, and, I mean, that's, that would be, we have a list all the time. Basically, the nurses can produce that anytime.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Deanna on this one? Students?
You're welcome.
Um, I think next step is, yeah, we can move it forward to the, an action item first reading?
Yes, please.
Yep, we'll go back, um, Mr. Lares. Thanks for, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Sorry, I was, I've been here, but I've been another pack officers, uh, next door, so. A quick update where we are at currently, so I've been working closely with, uh,
Alright.
It does add a ten seconds, sorry.
Okay. I've been working closely with, uh, Mr. Gilman as we work through the transition for the next, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, bringing him up to speed and updating him on all of the grants and processes that are currently in play. We are in the midst of working on registering students for our summer program, which will be happening July, pretty much the month of July. And finalizing dates and times and staffing and all of those things as well. All, all through these processes, we're bringing Mr. Gilman along, so he's fully aware and making the transition as smooth as possible for you. Right now, it kind of feels like it's taken from a fire hose, but don't worry, we're going to make sure you're all right. So, uh, he's also over there currently right now with the pack officers and providing some updates. We have a presentation coming up, May fourteenth for you, from the students and, uh, kind of a debrief of the NASBA conference that we just got back from. I will share just a quick tidbit. It's absolutely amazing. We are so proud of our students and what they've accomplished. And the, watching them blossom and grow in that scenario was absolutely pivotal to understanding how important it is to give kids as many opportunities as possible to break out and go see the world and understand that there's more, that they can contribute to the betterment of the entire world. And so I'm really proud of what they accomplished. I'm really hoping, um, that we get a good turnout for the fourteenth board meeting and hopefully people online do show up. Tell your friends that they, uh, log on so they can see that. We'll keep it around ten minutes, though, just so you can see. And then any additional questions or anything that you might have, please feel free to swing by. The kids would love to share with you on a more in-depth, focused. Also, we are working on making sure we have all of our stuff for reporting, compliance, probably going to have it be you. Next year, we're currently giving everything in order for that as well. So again, smooth transitions and things are available and already set and done. Nice having questions that I can answer specifically?
Questions for Eric?
No? Alright. Fantastic. We'll head back to the other meeting. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to discussion item four, review and policy procedure thirty-two-ten, uh, non-discrimination.
Uh, so we're required to, uh, you know, as you know, update our policies and procedures. This is one that, um, was a little bit outdated. So this is the most current language. It basically provides, um, the path for a person, if they felt like they were discriminated against, to, there's a complaint procedure and process that they can follow. So this is a policy we already have. This is just the new, the updated version from WASDA.
I'm going to add to this. There is, if you look through the whole and then the WASDA, the combination, it's quite overwhelming. Um, I think the important piece here is, uh, you notice our last, um, change in this was nineteen, but it was originally adopted in two thousand and one. So there is a lot of changes that have happened legislative so far. So this is one that, um, our legal counsel advised that we take a look at. Um, and so I'm open for any discussion like we always do, but I just find, you know, it was one, it was very important that we take a look at.
On the, uh, red line policy, under the non-discrimination statement paragraph, I, I feel like we have this in another policy as well, but this Boy Scouts of America, I think we changed that.
So we will change this to whatever, just, you're, you're very correct. I'm one hundred percent correct. We just, that's part of the problem when we would have this one up in our two policies with another, basically, or not work together. So, um, all of those things are things that we bring up at this meeting so that we make sure that we bring you the first reading that we're accurate.
Any other questions for Kim or Deanna?
So what I'm hearing is we want to make sure that the two policies' language match. Is that a correct statement?
Yeah. I think we can move it forward to, uh, first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving, moving on to, uh, review of policy and procedure fifty-four oh six, uh, leave sharing.
So this is one of these that you don't know you don't have or don't know that you don't need until you need it. And this has never been in our policy, but yep, we have a leave-sharing form. And there's no policy that monitors, controls, I don't know which one, guides maybe is a better word, are leave-sharing. So, um, what you have in front of you is, um, leave-sharing, and where it came back was from the cross-reference and conflicts between policy and bargaining units. And then, um, also, there's leave-sharing language in our law. And so we had to make sure that our form matched those, and then I went to pull up policy fifty-four oh six, and we didn't have one. So that's why it's in front of you tonight.
Good catch. Any questions for Kim on this one? Nope, I think we can move this to first read. Uh, next up is the MOU for Wednesday's schedule.
So MOUs don't, do not necessarily have an action item, but I wanted to make sure it was on public and on the record. Um, the Teachers Association and the district have agreed that for the remainder of the teacher's contract, that we will remain at a early release and not a late start wedding.
Great, any questions on that one? Okay, thank you. Uh, moving on to action items. Uh, first up is recommendation for higher Woodstrand Elementary Principal.
So for people who are, um, listening here tonight, um, it is, our recommendations higher normally fall under a consent agenda item. But there's not too many times in the Prosser School District where you hire a new building principal because our principals stick around a long time. So we separated it out and wanted you to be able to do that. And then, you know, once the vote is conducted, then, um, we were going to ask our new employee to step forward and introduce themselves.
Well, sort of new.
Um, well, I will move to approve your recommendation for hire for the Woodstrand Elementary Principal.
I'd second it.
It's been moved and seconded to, um, to approve the recommendation for hire of Woodstrand Elementary Principal, uh, Jelaine Gronavell.
Please come forward.
Comments, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
My name is Jelaine Gronavell, and I was very excited to be offered the position of Woodstrand Elementary Principal. So I'm here to just tell you a little bit about my background and how I came to be sitting in this chair today. So way back in nineteen ninety-nine, my husband and I relocated to the Akma Valley. And at that time, we're like, oh, it'll be a fun adventure. Let's go for two years. So, two years turned into twenty-five. And so we're slightly overdue on our return trip to Canada, but I would say it's safe to say we're here for the duration. Um, I was a stay-at-home mom for many years, and then when my youngest entered kindergarten, I decided it was a good time to switch courses and change direction. And I started working as a para educator at the Prosser School District. And in, that was in two thousand and thirteen. So in two thousand and fourteen, I decided I wanted to become a teacher. And I discussed some options with Deanna over what the best route to be would, to take. And so I signed up with WGU, and while I was doing that, the district got me an emergency teaching certification. And so I was able to sub for different teachers. I was still a para, and then they would pull me when they were really short-staffed. And in two thousand and seventeen, I believe it was, I started working as a teacher full-time in a district-level behavior program. And then in two thousand and eighteen, the life skills teacher resigned, and so I slid over into that position. And so when I finished with my bachelor's, I have an endorsement in elementary education, case year eight, and special education, case year twelve. And at that time, I decided, you know, I'm used to sacrificing my weekends, so I might as well keep going. And signed up through Eastern Washington University and have a master's in educational leadership with a principal certification. And during my internship and the years that have followed, I've been able to sub in every building in our district, which was a great opportunity for me to observe different leadership styles and glean information from all the different leaders, things that worked, things that I thought might work for me one day or wouldn't work for me one day. And so that leads me here today. And that youngest child who started kindergarten a few months ago graduates in a couple of weeks. And so, again, it's a great time for me to change course, change direction, and take the next step. And so I'm very grateful to be able to continue to be part of the Prosser School District community and very excited to get to work with some great leaders. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to resolution zero-six-two-five, Prosser High School WIAA membership.
Can you hear me?
A little bit louder there, Jackson.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sweet. Um, so this is just the policy. Uh, I am asking that Prosser High School and Housel Middle School, uh, remain in the WIAA. I'm asking that we, uh, allow our high school and our middle school to continue to participate, um, in order to, uh, compete against other schools and not be an independent school in which we wouldn't be able to compete for state championships, league titles, all that good jazz. So, um, that's what the first resolution is, and then the second resolution was, of course, Housel Middle School, uh, being part of the WIAA as well.
Thanks, Jackson. Any questions for Jackson?
Uh, I move to approve both of them at the same time?
They're, uh, resolutions, so it's a roll call vote.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve resolution oh-six-two-five for Prosser High School WIAA membership.
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution zero-six-two-five, uh, Prosser High School WIAA membership. Students? It's a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine-two will vote aye. Motion carries.
Now I'll move to approve resolution oh-seven-two-five for Housel Middle School WIAA membership.
I'd second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution zero-seven-two-five for Housel Middle School WIAA membership. Students? So roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
And nine-two will vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jackson.
You're welcome.
Oh, I guess you're on the next one, too.
Yes, sir.
Next up is a consultant service agreement for track starters at Prosser Invite.
Um, so actually, it's for our, uh, upcoming league meet on May eighth, I believe. It's versus Seela and Ellensburg. Um, we've been trying to look for a starter, uh, who starts all the races for our track meet, and we couldn't find anybody. And so I reached out to these two gentlemen from the Columbia Basin area by Afraidah. They actually are the two WIAA state, um, starters for the one-A, two-A, no, I believe it's one-B, two-B, and one-A's in El, in Eisenhower, Eisenhower High School in Yakima. And so I reached out to, to those two gentlemen. I know them pretty well and see if they could come down and run our meet for us, and they said, for sure, uh, since we're going to be running your, uh, regional meet as well, let's, let's, uh, head on over to Prosser. And so, uh, they're willing to do our, our starting for our last league meet, uh, at a hundred dollars apiece. So Tom Parish is one of the gentleman's names, and the other gentleman is Ken McCarty. And they do a really good job. So I'm just asking for permission in order to, uh, allow them to, uh, do our meet for us. And they do a really good job. So I'm just asking for permission in order to uh, allow them to do our meet for us.
Uh, Jackson, real quick, uh, one of them, it says that Prosser Invite, or they both say Prosser Invite. Is that the same thing as our last track meet?
Yeah, so I think they made a mistake on that. It's supposed to say our league meet, not the Prosser Invite. So I can resend those files on over to you guys. Um, but it shouldn't be the Prosser Invite. It's actually our league meet.
Think we can make that adjustment.
Got it.
Any questions for Jackson? We'll move to approve the consultant surfer, eh, consultant service agreements for track starters at the Prosser League Meet. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now, thanks again, Jackson.
Hey, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, next up is out-of-state travel for HMS FCC LA to Orlando, Florida.
Yes. So last month, FCC LA uh, for HMS, uh, two individuals qualified for national competition. Harper Park and Carly O'Brien. So they qualified at Star Professional Presentation Event or Cyber Bowl. They were number one in the state, and so they're requesting to go back to represent Washington State. They're going to fundraise all their, all their funds to cover their costs, and then the district will cover the cost of Pan and Perkins.
Great job.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any questions?
No, but I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for HMS FCC LA.
Can I second it? I'll second it.
All right, it's moved and seconded to approve out-of-state travel for HMS FCC LA. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'm the next one.
Oh, you got the next. All right. Next up is uh, Prosser High School Agreement for Education, Educational Services with Columbia Safety LLC and Prosser High School.
So Columbia Safety is the organization that provides our nursing assistant program. And so there's some updates that need to be done to that program, and so they need to get some, some of their own training. They need to do site inspections. They need to do paperwork. And so that's what the contract is for, is for them to get, be able to be certified to provide the service for our health ox students to get their nursing assistant certificate.
Is that them coming into, into our building to do that or?
No, so, so Health Ox is all at the hospital.
Oh.
And so they'll come in and do a site visit there and inspect, do their inspections there. And Carly Green's actually the facilitator for the online curriculum.
Oh, okay.
And then with that, they do give us, if you look further down in the contract, uh, we do get the tuition for that course at a reduced cost. Like at four hundred dollars where it's anywhere from thirteen to eighteen hundred dollars if they went through Columbia Safety directly. And then CT picks up that part of the cost.
Questions for Rick? Students? I move to approve the Prosser High School Agreement for Educational Services with Columbia Safety LLC and Prosser High School. We'll move then second in, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Have a great night.
Thanks, Rick. Uh, next up is first reading of policy one thousand, legal sta- status and operation.
There's been no changes since our discussion.
Any question?
I'll move to approve the first reading of policy one thousand, legal status operations.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy one thousand. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up is the first reading, first reading of policy fifty-two eighty-one, disciplinary action and discharge.
No modifications.
No. Any questions? Question? I move to approve first reading of policy fifty-two eighty-one.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy fifty-two eighty-one. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, number nine, first reading of policy sixty-five fifty-one, information security.
There's no changes. I mean, other than the ones that you asked me to make last week.
Okay. You got everything in there you wanted, you needed?
Yeah.
Questions for Sean?
Well, I'd move to approve first reading of policy six-five-five one, information security.
Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of policy six-five-five one. Question, or students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next is the second rea- second final reading of policy fourteen twenty, proposed agenda and consent agenda. I move to approve the second reading of policy fourteen twenty.
Second?
Moved and second, seconded to approve the second reading of policy fourteen twenty. Student? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is the second reading of policy fourteen thirty, audience participation.
Any changes or? I'd move to approve the second reading of policy fourteen thirty, audience participation.
Second? Been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of policy fourteen thirty. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, lastly is vouchers. Any questions on vouchers?
I'd move to approve vouchers.
Second?
All right, it's been, right? It's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers. Uh, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up is the Prosser Principal Association Memorandum of Agreement for July twenty, or July first, twenty twenty-five through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
So this was an amazing respectful partnership that we went through this. It's probably one of the faster. For those of you who have compared the two, there were not a lot of changes. We did changes that matched our teachers' contracts so that we were doing that. Um, we put some limitations on professional development so we could budget appropriately. And the best part about all of this is the top left cell of the salary schedule. And for those who would like to understand it better, Mr. Bailey's here, because we worked on this together. But this is the, in a nutshell, it gives a responsibility factor above the highest paid teacher in our district. So that our lowest paid administrator never makes less than what our highest paid teacher makes. And um, that's a really good thing. And as I explained to a couple of board members who called and asked questions about it, was this. We don't have to negotiate salary every year. When the teachers negotiate their salary, it's a mathematical formula that goes in an Excel spreadsheet and it calculates the salary. Salaries go down, it goes down. Salaries go up, it goes up. But it's a really good way to conduct business. And other than that, I think that pretty much covers it. We did it in about, we did it in two settings and we did it fast and very respectful and, and nice to conduct business that way.
Any questions for Kim? I move to approve the Prosser Principal Association Memorandum of Agreement for July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Been moved in second in, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up, that concludes our action items tonight. Moving on to consent items. One through three.
Only in the printed one.
Okay.
I move to approve the consent items, one through three.
I'll second it.
Been moved and approved. Oh, uh, moved, moved in second to approve the consent items, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to reports. Deleese, you're up first.
Okay, um, tonight I just have student enrollment for the month of April. Um, and as you can see, we are down two more students than the month of March. And we will dwindle down a little bit for the next couple of months, but we should stay pretty steady. The only thing that I do want to point out um, is last year at this time, our enrollment was twenty-three eighty. That is over three hundred thousand dollars a month that we don't have per month um, that we have to think about. So um, as we are doing better than twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-one, twenty-two, we, we do have a significant change from last year.
We, we've probably asked this a million times, but um, we had three that withdrew from graduation away, is that right?
But into, back to life.
Back to life, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure everybody done. Thank you. Any questions for Deleese? Thanks, Deleese.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, just a few things. Um, we are spending most of our time on budget planning, bargaining, working with the unions right now as we transition into trying to make some really significant reductions in our budget. Um, we, we did, Brian didn't report this, but our, uh, for the second try, our freshman pass rate has continued to grow. It's the highest it's been since pre-COVID. Um, it grew eight percent since the beginning of the year. So uh, David's working really hard with his team to improve that. He's doing a fantastic job. And they're making a lot of progress in um, changing some of the practices and operations at the high school to help all kids be more successful. Um, I was able to help lead principal or lead principal interviews um, and get all of that set up. So it was, it was a bit of a whirlwind, but it all worked out great. So congratulations to Jelaine. And then um, and Brian mentioned it, but I guess we will be moving into SBA testing as well as the WECAST testing, which is the science testing, grades three through eight and grade ten. Um, take uh, ELA in math, plus any student that needs, might need to retake at the high school. And then grades uh, five, eight and ten, take the science assessment as well. So that'll speak, that's starting here quite soon. I think late uh, April for heights. And we'll go on through June, and I think the middle school might be the latest. And they're going, I think, all the way till uh, the first week of June. So um, that'll be busy. So parents, you know, have your kids well rested and just encourage them to do their best. Um, and uh, that's it for me.
Thank you. Deanna, any questions for Deanna?
Yeah, Deanna, do you know when you'll have an update on the pilot of the science curriculum?
Um, I can give you that update right now. So um, the middle school is, wants some, to talk to some school districts uh, about the discovery curriculum. Um, so we're working on arranging that. The high school is uh, looking at, at this point, has moved away from discovery, is uh, are piloting some units for, from Savas. Um, so we're going to be meeting again in, is this April? We're going to be meeting again in May. Um, we didn't really want it to be this late, but you know, they want to make a good decision. It's a big deal. So um, we'll be meeting again in a few weeks and trying to move forward of the decision. If, if we're not able to make one, then, or if we don't feel like we have the best curriculum, we'll come and let you know that. If we feel like we do, then you'll start hearing that as well.
Maybe an additional question. Uh, if we pick a curriculum, say in May or June.
Yep.
Uh, when do we have to pay for it?
So um, if we select a curriculum, most current, most of the time they're going to ship in August. So once shipped, then you usually have to pay within thirty days. We have the money in our budget now, although Deleese would like me not spend it for the adoption. But we have more in our budget now than I think it's going to cost us, even if we selected both middle school and high school curriculum. Um, so, so that's good. Plus, we, we, we do need to, to use the thirty-one thousand dollars we received from Patel. So um, we make a decision, it's still kind of a prolonged process because once they make a decision, um, it has to go to um, the district and, well, it goes for community review, district instructional materials, and then to the board. So it, it's still going to take a while. And they're aware of that. We had that discussion. The union, um, the teachers' union in their contract does have a provision, if the teachers choose exercise it, that they have curriculum before they leave for the summer. But the good thing about curriculums now is it's all online. And this group is like, we don't care when we get it. We, you know, if we want to make a good decision, and when we get it, we get it. And we'll get training so we can implement. So the goal would still be to implement in August to start school. Um, and I don't foresee that being a problem um, as long as we can make a decision. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, you're up.
All right, so um, super exciting. Um, it's funny to say exciting and yet it's stressful. Um, so in contract negotiations, we have meeting with the coaches' association. That's our athletic coaches' association is on Friday. Um, we are doing our first negotiation with our um, educational office personnel. So that's basically your administrative assistants on May sixth. Um, we also have our PSE meeting um, on Friday. And then um, I, I just so thank you for the principal association for the, the quick, respectful way in which we conducted our negotiation. Budget, um, you know, I want everybody to know, I cannot thank our community, our teachers, our PSE members. I bet I have had, I don't know, Selena's not here, so she manages my calendar better. I'm going to say I bet I've had fifteen stakeholder meetings about the budget. Everything from, how can we do this? How could we fundraise? How could we do that? Thinking outside the box things. Um, and it is so great to see a community like Prosser coming together and saying, we're going to make a difference. We're going to do some things to um, try and save programs and save jobs and do all of those things. So that's amazing. I do think it's very important that people continue to watch our state and federal um, money makers or decision makers. We did hear in one small email today that they may extend this legislative session because they cannot make a decision on the budget. The actual last day of session, I think, is April twenty eighth, maybe April twenty ninth. I don't know, remember the exact date. And now they're talking about maybe not being able to be done, and that would get extended. What does that mean to us? That means that decisions that we are making may get extended. Because we can't make decisions when we don't know how much money, what revenue is coming in. Um, exciting. We did finally have a real tour, um, submit their requests for qualifications to us. And we're meeting tomorrow to go over that. Um, once again, when we sell property, that doesn't go into our basic education or operating money. But it does help us continue to maintain our property. Our capital committee met um, on the seventeenth. We did write and finalize and adopt our mission. It reads to responsibly plan, maintain and improve district facilities through fiscally responsible, long-range efforts that support great student experiences today and for generations to come. This is really important for people to understand. This is people that are of all ages, all facts of, walks of life, coming together and saying, we've made some big investments in our community and we have to manage them. coming together and saying, we've made some big investments in our community, and we have to manage them. Not, not any different than when you, if you're a homeowner and you know that in twelve years, your roof's had a twenty-year life, and in twelve years, you're gonna have to replace that roof. Um, that's what we're talking about here. How do we manage that? Um, so that was very exciting. Capital projects, the Housel Chiller is in, it's working, and then I did hear something this afternoon that some part broke, but we're, we're gonna have air conditioning for Housel this spring. The vestibule is in, I don't know if you've been by lately, they did have to move the, um, glass or that holds like their meeting, bulletin board, thank you. And it has been moved. Now we need to move the ADA button to where it's supposed to be. And we'll get those Q Q things, and then we have the badges, and we'll get them printed and for the staff and get that going. So we're super close, but the punch list items, the metal that was behind the back that had the big dent in it has been fixed and replaced, so we're getting them to the punch list. Okay, I don't know if any of you drove around Prosser Ave past the library tonight, but if you're listening, it is green and red on the old tennis courts. The fence is in, the lines are striped. Community, are you listening? Don't go on the new turf or surface, it has to cure. So, Andy Howe, um, we spoke this evening, they're gonna lock it up. We have some pieces we have to do. We have to get our garbage cans in place. We have to get our signage for usage rules and so forth. So, um, I really have to thank our pickleball community. I have a few people that I've been calling every day. What color do you want the non-volley zone? Does it need to be? I mean, because I, I truly don't know those answers. And so to those people, the community members and others who voted for our capital levy, this is a community and school facility, and we have to make sure we take care of it, and that it's managed properly, and we, I think our pickleball community is super excited to go play six courts all at one time and do whatever. Um, I know our PE is excited to be able to come down and have six courts, and we have the one tennis court. So I know I've talked a lot about it, but it's a big deal, so hang on, but stay off it for a couple more days, give me some time. Um, I don't know if you've noticed, this building has been pressure washed. If you want to think about how dirty and old it, the stuff coming off the sides of the building was amazing, but it cer- certainly looks much better. The hard water, even on some of the lower windows, is better, but it, it took off a lot of that. I have a meeting with a glass or a window company, they're coming. They've told me that they might have a resource for a grant for, um, buildings over, and, and I don't know, please don't quote me, eighty years or ninety years or something, so we may be able to find windows for this building. We are also gonna put the landscape rock in here now that the building's been washed. Excuse me, everyone. And then, um, so we're getting pretty close. It looks like we took the strings off the trees, the weed eating's getting done, things are looking good. The Wausau Regional Meeting is tomorrow night here in this building. We've sent it out, we're, I think, as of this afternoon, sometime, we have eighteen or nineteen other board members coming, so that's exciting for us. We get to, um, show off a little bit. And then, um, I'm still, I don't know, I don't know how many webinars Deanna and I are doing right now between legislative, state and federal, all kinds of things, trying to keep up, reading the TUIA, which is this weekend Olympia, it's this document that we get every Friday or, but I mean, it's just so much. So we're doing, trying to keep up on that. I did do my registration and payment for both my leadership conferences in May. And for public information, I will be, um, traveling to my family in Wyoming. I'll be leaving on, after work on Thursday, the first, and I will return on Tuesday, this.
Thanks, Kim. Any?
Oh, um, I know, so this has been, thank you. Um, we have had so many appreciation days. Just want to make sure we talk about that publicly. Um, so we have had transportation bus driver appreciation, right? Had administrative appreciation. Um, I want to make it public known, we do not, meaning Prosser School District, we don't set the date. We don't set what they're called. Um, there was a little bit of, uh, I got a couple emails and so forth, well, why do blank group get a week if we get a day and all of those things? We don't set those things. Those are things we follow state and or national guidelines, and we try and participate and honor everybody. So please understand, those aren't things that we, the Prosser School District put together, or we control. The date that's chosen, or I see Crystal's on, we always kind of joke that for years, she says that if minutes, uh, Assistant Principal Week was always during spring break, so she never got celebrated. So this way, they, this year, they did her up good because it was a different day. So we don't set those dates, and I just want to know. But everybody needs to know, our administrative assistance and our transportation, this district doesn't run without you, so thank you very much, and you are greatly appreciated.
Great, thanks, Kim. Any questions for Kim?
I actually, Kim had a question about, um, budget talks and community feedback. So it sounds like you've got a lot of good, um, had a lot of good stakeholder calls with community members who are looking for solutions. And I just wanted to ask you this question publicly, because I think I know your answer, but I want everyone to hear it. I have heard from a number of people who've said, we would love to help, how can we fundraise? How can we get the community involved to pay for this or pay for that? And then they're told by someone, we don't do that in Prosser. The Prosser School District does not accept fundraising.
No. So first of all, thank you for bringing it up publicly. We do. There are avenues and ways in which we have to do that. So each one of those stakeholders that may be listening tonight or listen to the recording later, depending on the type that it is, um, I'm gonna say Music Boosters has a program, Athletics have a, has a booster club. If there's a, um, I'm gonna use science curriculum, somebody wants to do a donation for science curriculum, so that basic education, you know, it sounds silly, but a hundred dollars that, and it can be directly earmarked, that donation comes in, it goes there, it's part of it. Um, there are many, many avenues to support it. The other thing, um, and I'm gonna go from our friends of the fields discussion. Mow, our beautiful green grass, by the way, I want you to compare the green grass right now to what it was July the year I started. I just want you to know the color of it. I'm gonna just note that for record. But with green grass comes lots of mowing, and I don't know if you ever feel like this at your house, but in March, or excuse me, April and May, sometimes you're mowing the lawn every five days instead of the once a week that you do. That's where we're at right now. If somebody wants to donate or help, if you, your family wants to be, you know how you can pick up garbage on the freeway or on a highway? If you want to be the mower for a certain area or field or something, you just let me know. We already covered with our insurance company how that liability works, all that goes on. If you want to be a friend of the grass, or if you want to help with restoring the windows in the building, I'm hoping to find a grant, but if you want to be involved, I will listen to you and I will find you a way. We will do it above board legally and follow all state, um, IRS protocols for doing so. And see that lady right over there, see Deleese? She makes me sure I follow all my rules. So I just don't say yes, I have people that I check with.
Great question.
I'm happy to hear that. Because now I'm not a liar. I've been telling everyone, no, I don't think that's true.
Uh, next up, board reports, Michelle.
I don't really have anything. I just wanted to wish, um, the group of kids who are going to NHD date this weekend, buck. And that's it.
Thanks, Michelle. Right?
Uh, just, yeah, I want to, obviously, uh, what Kim was saying, want to thank assistant principals, bus drivers, administration professionals. Lot of days in there, but, uh, thank you guys for what you do for the district. Had the opportunity to get back and help with the roadie track meet this past weekend, and I was, uh, pretty, pretty cool to see thirty-plus schools, I believe, um, and the weather that we had, given what the morning looked like. Um, I don't think you could ask for a better afternoon and, uh, evening at Park Biker Stadium. That was, that was pretty cool. So, so yeah.
Frank?
Yeah, and I, I would add that, because the fight, I just, it just looked like it's so well-managed, like whoever was in charge of that, uh, did a really good job. I know Jack, he, he was part of that, um. But there's just a lot of moving parts with, and a lot of people, and it just stayed, as the state of time. It just, it just, oh, well-run, um, track meet, so that was really cool. Um, you know, and then talking about budgets as far as the state goes, I, you know, there, the state is in trouble, you know, there, that's probably the reason why they're not able to, to, you know, find a, or to pass a budget yet. So, you know, I think it's good, just good for us to prepare for the reality that our state is in trouble financially. And, um, you know, how do we get creative with our, with our communities, like, like you were saying, Michelle? And just preparing for those realities, but, uh, and, you know, the other piece was how do we listen to our community and our enrollment where we need it? You know, there's, uh, I know I've heard statistics about, you know, families having less kids and all that, but, uh, you know, I think we just do need to have an ear, have our ear to our community as well. Um, or, you know, these young people, when you get married, you gotta have more kids. This, this is the way it's gonna have to be, but, um, but anyway, there's, uh, yeah, there's, there's just a lot of, a lot of needs out there, and, um, I think, I think it's important that we, we listen and try to plan the best we can.
Great, thanks, Frank. Um, I don't have a report, just maybe have some informational items, uh, for the board and everybody here and left on. Um, recently, um, a bill was passed, ESHB twelve-nine-six. And it, it did have a lot of different language in it. Um, you know, part that I found a little bit interesting is, um, I don't know if it was at, I think it was added, but I could be wrong. Uh, they took, if you didn't follow the, the bill, uh, through your policies and the way you interact, uh, OSPI could cut funding up to twenty percent of your allocated, um, allocated funds. In addition to that, uh, by initiative last year, the Parents' Bill of Rights was, uh, was passed by, uh, the voters of Washington State. As of now, they basically dismantled that entire initiative, and I was just gonna kind of brief a little bit of what they took out. They took out records like, uh, medical records, uh, any records pertaining to mental health counseling, uh, any vocational counseling, et cetera. They did kind of reword it, so I don't think that includes all of that, but I think the big thing, um, is they took out completely stricken from, it is to receive, uh, a vacation when medical services are being offered to their child, except where emergency medical treatment is required, to receive notification when any medical service or medications have been provided to their child that could result any financial impact, uh, to receive notification when the school has arranged directly or indirectly for medical treatment that results in follow-up care beyond normal school hours. I think that was kind of the big ones. There, there's a whole bunch of in, the things that they've taken out. Uh, parents aren't to be notified if their child is, um, if they're a victim of a crime, then the parents get notified, but if they're accused or arrested or, or stuff like that, they aren't notified, at least based on my, my reading of this. Um, and, and you can go on and read through it. It's very long. I think it's like thirty pages. Um, it's hard to follow if you're not used to reading that kind of, uh, language, because you have to read it, then follow the law that they're referencing. So for instance, I, I went down a wormhole, when it becomes some medical records, you know, you're a consent age at thirteen, right? You can't get a tattoo till you're eighteen, but you can send medical service at thirteen. Um, and there's some instances, and you have to go through the health bill to figure all that out, where you could actually do it younger, um, than thirteen. So I, you know, we, we talk about getting to our legislators and have, you know, having them be a voice for us, um, you know, here in Prosser, in, in our community. Uh, but I think they have an uphill battle, you know, with the, you know, Democrat majority, better, better gonna do stuff like this for stuff that voters approve. So, that's all I have. And I'm sure we'll see more of that as it comes through some policy. Um, we'll go from there. Yeah. So future meetings, there's a safety and security meeting, May fourteenth, uh, right here, and you know, in the staff development room at five PM, and a regular board meeting, May fourteenth, right here at six PM. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.